Hello, Town Meeting Members, Committees, and the Public. I am Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance for the Town of Plymouth. I'm here today to present to you an update to the fiscal 2022 budget that was voted on last spring. And we will be making adjustments at the Fall Annual Town Meeting based on updated information with regards to revenue sources and expenditure needs. We do this every year at this time so that the budget is final for preparation of our fiscal 2022 tax rate that will be set in December. In your Town Meeting packets, which will be posted to our website, under Quick Links, Town Meeting Information, there will be an updated Sources and Uses spreadsheet for the General Fund, which will have a column of changes for the fall next to the Spring 2022 Budget Projection Column. In this presentation, I will go over sections of this spreadsheet and explain the changes. So you're familiar with the Town Meeting books that we give to all Town Meeting members, these yellow books that you got back in the spring. The spreadsheet that I'm referring to was included in the budget book. So we'll give you a new spreadsheet that you'll be able to bring or have with you at Town Meeting, and we'll also post all that information on our website. In this budget presentation, I will go over sections of the spreadsheet and explain the changes. Under Article 2A and 2B, you will be asked to make the necessary adjustments to the General and Enterprise Fund operating budgets. The General Fund is a net decrease of $2,44,285, for a total of $242,649,446. And the Enterprise Funds are a net decrease of $227,934, for a total of $17,780,494,000, a grand total budget of $260,429,940. This is an overall 2% increase in the fiscal 22 operating budget over the previous fiscal year. You will hear more detail about the specific budget requests and adjustments from the Town Department and Division Heads later in our presentation. In addition to the budgets that are voted at Town Meeting, there are other General Fund items that we need to raise on our tax rate recap. The most common include State and County Assessments, Snow and Ice Deficit, and the Overlay Reserve. The Overlay Reserve is the allowance for abatements and exemptions for property taxes. Exemptions represent approximately $740,000 of the overlay, of which the town is reimbursed from the state approximately $465,000. At Town Meeting, there will be two articles to adopt a new exemption for Gold Star Families and to increase the Senior Tax Work-Off Program to include Veterans for Fiscal 2023. These programs are funded through the overlay, so this will see an increase in next fiscal year. This fiscal year, there are no changes to that, and we are recommending 1.2 million. State and County Adjustments is decreasing from what was projected by 1.2 million. The Snow and Ice Deficit is decreased by 134,000 from what was projected, and there is a new item, the $7,500 required by statute that we gave the Charter Commission to start their work. In summary, on the expenditure side of the budget, the overall increase since the spring is a net of $640,886. Now looking at the revenue side of things, state aid is an overall decrease from what we had budgeted by 163,000. However, when you combine this with the State and County Assessment decrease on the expenditure side, the net state aid was an overall increase of $1 million plus. Local receipts saw a significant increase over what we had originally anticipated. The total increase is $1,556,405 for a 10.54% increase over the prior year. Due to the pandemic, we were cautious and wanted to wait to see the results of fiscal '21, and they were pretty good. We were able to increase our estimates for the following: motor vehicle excise, $684,000; other excises, which includes both hotel motel and short-term rentals, plus the new cannabis excise tax, that was increased $729,000; beach sticker sales was increased $41,000; crematory services was increased $70,000; and licenses and permits were increased $201,000. Areas where we decreased is the Medicaid reimbursement for services that were reduced due to the pandemic and the remote learning and investment income. To help offset taxes that need to be raised, there are several available funds that can be used to fund specific items in the budget. A few of these have been updated based on our actual borrowing activity that happened in the spring. Those are amounts that we found in project funds that are less than $50,000 that can be used for debt service, and a decrease needed from the Pavement Management Debt Fund, and also a decrease to the premium for debt exclusion because we use that money to pay down the debt on the Plymouth North High School project. I'm also recommending that we use our General Stabilization Fund for $600,667 of debt service for Town Hall in lieu of the mail's tax due to the pandemic effect on the mail's tax fund. The revenue saw a dramatic decrease over the last couple of years due to COVID, and I feel it's necessary to build the mail's tax fund up to a level that it can sustain the payment of the Town Hall on an annual basis into the future. My recommendation today is to use the rainy day fund for this amount and most likely again next year based on my estimates. Information regarding the mail's tax can be found on the Finance Department's website under the Financial Report Center, Special Funds, and Other Revenues. Due to these increases to net state aid, local receipts, and other available funds, this resulted in a decrease to the amount needed from the property taxes of $747,222. Also, this past spring, the town was able to refinance the 2011 debt service on a portion of the Plymouth North High School project and 100% of the Center for Active Living, saving the taxpayers $365,031 in property taxes this fiscal year due to the interest savings. In total, the savings on these two projects to the taxpayer is over $6.5 million on the remaining 15 years of the loan. The total decrease of $1,112,253 to property taxes will equate to at least a 10-cent savings on the tax rate based on 2021 values. New growth, updated values, and actual excess levy capacity and tax rate for fiscal '22 remain to be determined as the assessors finish their work. These are estimates at this time that you see on this slide. In closing, other items to note. In Capital Articles on the Warrant for Town Meeting, Articles 4, 5, and 8, we are recommending funding with available funds, grants, and borrowing that will stay within our guideline of 6% to 8% of our annual operating budget. The Enterprise Fund changes are a combination of debt service decreases in the Water and Sewer Fund, and a position that was cut in the airport is going to be restored in this budget. Other information that I wanted to provide to you was updates on our CARES Act and ARPA funding. That information can be found on our website, on the Finance Department website, under CARES Act and ARPA Funding. That concludes my overall budget presentation for the Fall Town Meeting. And at this time, myself and other government officials will discuss with you the changes that are being made to the General Fund and Enterprise operating budgets under the various Subcommittee categories that you voted last spring.
Melissa Origi, the Town Manager, and this is Article 2A. It's a supplemental budget request, and it seeks to establish a grant writer. The cost would be approximately $80,000 with benefits. And at a recent Select Board meeting, many of you may know, the Board started setting goals. This is the first time they've done it in quite some time, and one of the goals that rose to the top was that they were looking to establish a grant writer. They do want somebody on staff full-time that concentrates on all the grant opportunities that are available to municipalities, both at the federal and the state level, as well as smaller grants that can be obtained from organizations. If this is approved at this Town Meeting, the position will be posted sometime maybe at the end of October, beginning of November, and we hope to have somebody on board by the beginning of the calendar year. In your packet of information, you will find a job description, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello, everyone. My name is Pearl Sears, and I'm the Town Clerk. I'm requesting supplemental funds in the amount of $21,355, which represents the amount spent in the FY '22 budget for the special election. Election worker salaries, we were able to keep a little bit lower as we were able to eliminate the checkout tables. We had four poll workers instead of six, bringing that total to $13,579. Overtime for the clerk's office was minimal, two hours the day before the election and Election Day at $1,204.95. School custodian overtime is paid out of the clerk's budget. That was $1,500. And then we had programming for our automark and tabulator machines, $559.35 for the automark machines, and $4,512.05 for our tabulators, which is also lower as there was one ballot type. So the total is $21,355 that I'm requesting to put back into my budget. Thank you.
Under Subcommittee A's budget, line item 12 is member benefits. We are recommending an overall increase to that budget of $84,000. It's broken up into several line items: a decrease in our workers' comp budget of $86,000; an increase in the deferred comp match due to participation of $24,000; an increase of $55,000 to the life insurance line item, and that is due to the new plan negotiated with our Public Employee Committee for a life insurance benefit of $15,000 for active employees, an increase from $2,000; and a $91,000 increase to Manage Blue, which is due to increased participation during open enrollment. The second item under Subcommittee A is item 13, All-Town Insurance. We're seeing a decrease in this budget based on just what the actual came in much less than what we had anticipated. So that's a decrease of $135,325. Under Subcommittee B's budget from the Spring Town Meeting, there's a couple of items that I am recommending adjustments for. Item 14, Personal Services, for the restoration of our internal auditor position during COVID. This was one of the cuts. We reduced her hours from 37.5 to 20 hours a week, and we really need that position to be restored. So we're requesting to actually restore that position at the Fall Town Meeting so that she will be able to be back to full-time status in November.
My name is Pamela Begatti. I'm the Treasurer Collector for the Town of Plymouth. For those of you who don't know me, I'm presenting some information on Article 2A, which is a supplemental budget request. And I have a request within that article that asks for two additional staff members, two C5 employees, to be added to the staff. The amount to be funded would be $45,792, and that will provide two full-time C5 clerks for the Treasurer Collector's Office. And as some of you may know, we are having an extremely difficult time providing customer service, providing the level of customer service that people should receive and expect to receive due to the volume of the mail, the tax bills, the other bills that this office handles, the telephone calls, several complaints about that. So in looking over the history of this department, we've noticed that there has been no additional staffing for the last 20-plus years. I do believe it's time for some growth in this area to be able to provide the necessary customer service. So we're hoping that you will support this request for Article 2A for Treasurer Collector's Office for two new positions in the clerical unit. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bill Abbott, and I'm Chair of the Charter Commission, which was elected last May. Our mission is to look very closely at our present form of government and see how it can be made more efficient, effective, and accountable, and get more bang for the buck, and be more transparent and inclusive, more democratic, and lead to a better quality of life in Plymouth. We have all kinds of options and ideas on the table, some radical and some modest, and right now, everything is on our table, a very full table indeed. We're examining all kinds of other local charters across our state, looking for provisions of those charters that might improve government here in Plymouth. At the same time, we're hearing from Plymouth folks, officials, taxpayers, and getting their thoughts. We're also inviting in the leaders from other towns to discuss what works for them. One year from now, next September, we must present a preliminary draft of a new charter for people to read and discuss, and then we'll finalize the language, publish it in the newspaper. We'd expect to place the new charter on the Town Ballot in May of 2023. We have a budget to get this done. $7,500 was provided to us initially as required by state statute. When the October Town Meeting warrant had closed, we had spent about $1,900 of that initial amount. This is almost all gone to pay our staff person, Michelle Turner, who does all the many things to keep our commission functioning and moving forward. We have a balance on hand of $5,600. And this Town Meeting, the Commission is asking for further funding to get us through the rest of this fiscal year through June 30, 2022. The amount we are seeking is $10,500, made up of $7,000 to continue to pay our staff person and $3,000 to be added to our legal budget. As next February, we expect to hire outside counsel to assist in the drafting of the new charter, and $500 for printing costs to help get out the word on the charter process. And that's it. We appreciate Town Meeting's favorable consideration of this request, and we continue to invite any Plymouthian, be he or she a Town Meeting representative or an interested citizen, to come to any of our meetings. They're held in person in the Great Hall and by way of the Zoom link. Anyone may speak to us during public hearing, public comment, but we have a seven-minute time limit, and give us his or her thoughts on how to improve our local government. We really want to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
The next item that I am recommending is an increase to the Salary Reserve Account for $948,432. This amount is for potential contract settlements that the management staff and Select Board are working on with the various bargaining units on the town side. And then the last item in Subcommittee B's report is a decrease to the General Fund Debt Service Budget of $737,087. This is due to the refunding that we did for our 2011 bond issue and also some new debt that we borrowed that the interest rate came in a little bit lower than we hadn't expected or we borrowed less than what we needed. So that decrease is to the debt service budget, and included with that is those changes that I spoke of earlier in my general overview budget presentation on the available funds that will be either reducing or increasing due to paying for debt service. So for example, my recommendation on the Stabilization Fund of $667,000 for the Town Hall debt to come from that instead of mail's tax fund. So those are my recommendations for Subcommittee B changes for the Finance Department.
Hello, my name is Neil Foley. I am the Deputy Fire Chief for the Plymouth Fire Department, here before you to request a supplement to our budget for our apparatus repair. The department is seeking an increase to our vehicle repair budget by the amount of $10,830,000. This is to cover unanticipated repairs to our pumping engine number nine following a catastrophic transmission failure. Several weeks ago, while Engine Nine was returning back to the station, the crew noticed a lot of mechanical issues going on with the vehicles. It was traveling down the road. They pulled it over to the side of the road and requested the mechanics division to meet them out there. Once the mechanics got on scene, they were able to determine that there was an issue with the transmission for the vehicle. A quick assessment realized that they were going to have to tow it back and probably send it out for specialty care. Once they sent that out and the repair costs came back, it was going to require a complete rehab or replacement, really, of the transmission itself. We had the work done because we did have it allotted in our budget at the time, but having this type of catastrophic failure this early in the budget season leads us to believe that we could run into trouble as the year progresses, knowing that we're probably going to have other issues coming down the road just with our general knowledge of what happens with our vehicle maintenance division. We're not anticipating a transmission failure when we're building our budget. Since we transferred all of our vehicles over to an automatic transmission, there's only been one other instance in the past 30 years where we've had a complete transmission failure. So knowing that this is out of the ordinary and out of our original planning, we're here before you to make our request for the amount. I'm here before you to ask for a supplement to our communications budget in the amount of $9,000. The $9,000 amount is for three additional months of rent for the temporary communications tower. Last fall, we sought funding to replace the existing communications tower that had to be taken down at Fire Headquarters due to a storm damage that occurred in 2018. The temporary trailer has been in place for over a year now, and we have in our budget line item funding through January of '22. However, due to delays of labor and material shortages and the unpredictability of the market, we've had some challenges getting this project started. We finally do have a signed bid and have a start date of the end of September. And the contractor assures us that if everything goes well, it should be about 60 days of construction time. But that's with perfect weather, without any other supply issues or any other delays that could occur that you would typically expect with any of these projects. The funding that we're requesting is a stopgap so that if construction does get delayed for any reason, we do have it in our communications budget to continue paying the rental on the temporary communications tower. And we're hopeful that we won't have to use that, but it'll be good to have it there in case we do. So I'm looking for your support on that. Thank you very much.
Hello, Town Meeting Members. My name is Kenneth King. I am the Superintendent of Cemeteries and the Crematory for the Town of Plymouth Department of Public Works. Today, I'm asking for support for supplemental budgets and articles for equipment that would support some of these positions. Right now, we would be looking for a new part-time position for the admin with cemetery and crematory. Right now, when the admin is out, we need to rely on outside departments to help us to cover vacations or sick time. The department in the crematory has increased. The cremations that we're doing has almost doubled since 2016. There's a lot of work regarding cemetery deeds, transfers, information on people's lots, and we deal with a lot of older information. And it's a position that really someone needs to be in for backup and if there's any retirements down the road. Also, we would be looking at adding five new laborer positions to the cemeteries. This would be positions that are needed. Since I started working in the cemetery in 1990, I felt there's always been a need. Now that I'm the Superintendent, I definitely see the need. From the '50s until the early '80s, the staffing was twice as much as what we have now, and it was augmented with seasonal help that brought the numbers between 12 to 16 positions. The last two years, we've averaged four to five full-time employees, and seasonal help has not been there when we need it. So some of this money would fund those positions at the five. Also, we would be looking at upgrading a position when it was brought back. The position should have been brought to a higher grade. This would be the Construction Maintenance Lead Man position. That position should be paid one step below a foreman. Right now, it is two grades below the foreman's position. We take care of over 22 cemeteries. We still have seven active cemeteries in the Town of Plymouth. We take care of between 120 and 140 burials per year. We cannot be at three places at the same time, and that is what is happening. When we have five employees, at times, we have three burials happening around the same time at three separate locations, and this is very difficult. We spend a lot of time doing burials in the town. It is our job, but we cannot cut grass and do burials at the same time. So a lot of the issues that we've had and complaints for 31 years that I know of is that we do not take care of the grass, it's not cut enough. And that is because we're busy doing burials. We also take care of a lot of foundations for headstones. We do usually about 50 of those a year. We also install veterans markers that come into our office free of charge. We have an obligation to take care of the cemeteries where any veteran is buried within, and all these cemeteries have veterans that are buried within them. So the issue has been that we have a high time going to the outside cemeteries because Divine Hills and Oak Grove Cemetery is 50 acres. By the time they cut from one side to the other, they need to start again. This becomes an issue when we have other cemeteries like Burial Hill, Chiltonville, Manamatt, and Cedarville that are on the larger side. I look forward to your support, and I hope I have it. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. This is the Plymouth Public Schools Supplemental Article 2 Request for the Fall 2021 Town Meeting. On this slide, you'll see our original appropriation for FY '22 that was approved at the 2021 On this slide, you'll see our original appropriation for FY twenty two that was approved at the twenty twenty one spring annual town meeting. In our budget, it's comprised of salary and non-salary lines. The salary lines were just over eighty one million. The non-salary lines were just over twenty two million, giving us an FY twenty two original appropriation of one hundred and three million, eight hundred and eighty nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy eight dollars. I do want to note, on this original appropriation, the budget was created with all contractual steps and lanes adjusted, but with a zero percent COLA. This Article Two represents the two percent COLA for all salary, salary and hourly increases for all affiliated and non-affiliated bargaining groups. At the time of publication, we have three bar units with full tentative agreements, and all bargaining groups have started negotiations. While funds will be added to the Plymouth Public Schools' operating budget, these funds will not be distributed to employees until their bargaining unit has fully executed agreements by both the unit and the school committee. On the right hand side of this sheet, you will see what the two percent cost is for all bargaining groups. The grand total for a two percent COLA for the Plymouth Public Schools is one million, six hundred, five thousand, five hundred and eighty five dollars. How that increase impacts our budget? If you take the original FY twenty two appropriation for salaries of eighty one million, three hundred and eighty nine thousand, three hundred and ten dollars, and you add the supplemental request of one million, six hundred, five thousand, five hundred and eighty five dollars, that gives you our updated FY twenty two salary total of eighty two million, nine hundred and ninety four thousand, eight hundred and ninety five dollars. If you follow along and take that number to the top right, shaded in blue, you'll see the updated FY twenty two salary. If you add in the original FY twenty two non-salary amount of twenty two million, five hundred thousand, four hundred and sixty eight dollars, that brings a grand total for operating budget for FY twenty two for the Plymouth Public Schools to a hundred and five million, four hundred and ninety five thousand, three hundred and sixty three dollars, and that's it.
Under Subcommittee G's budget, I am recommending a decrease to the enterprise fund debt service budgets for both water and sewer. Water is a decrease of a hundred and two thousand, four hundred and twenty six, and sewer is a decrease of a hundred and sixty six thousand, four hundred and fifty three. Both of these reductions have to do with our refunding and new debt that was borrowed in, in the spring. Our estimates were a little bit higher than needed, and so this is an overall reduction to the debt service budget for the enterprise funds under Subcommittee G's line item.
Good afternoon. Tom Marr, Plymouth Airport Manager. I'm here today to request the support of town meeting regarding Article Two B. This article would increase the enterprise salary line item by approximately forty thousand, nine hundred and forty five dollars, allowing the airport to return the airport staffing back to the pre-COVID staffing levels. The airport activity and fuel sales have been returning back towards the two thousand and nineteen levels, and in turn, the airport would like to return the staffing levels back to what we had had prior to COVID. In this situation, the funding would just increase the authorization and that all of the payment would be through the airport enterprise revenue stream.
So overall, you have heard all of the department requests for changes to the general fund and enterprise fund operating budgets. We are available to answer any questions that you may have the night of the presentation, and these videos will be on PAC TV, and as the public watches them, you are welcome to email us with any questions that you may have regarding any of the budget requests or any, anything else. We're always there for you to answer any questions. Thank you very much.